...five, thirty-five A, thirty-six, and thirty-six A.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? unanimous? We have no meeting minutes to approve. We'll start with our seven o'clock for a public hearing for acceptance of streets at town meeting, Leonard Lane and Mill Road Extension.
Mr. Chairman, this is the second meeting relative to this matter. As you recall, at the last meeting, the board voted its intention to go forward with laying out these two particular streets. It provided you at that time with a memorandum from the engineering director, Mr. Pronsky, who indicated that the subdivisions have been inspected by the Department of Public Works during construction, and the subdivisions have been completed to the satisfaction of the engineering division, both in the case of Leonard Lane and Mill Road Extension. He's provided that information to the board. Nothing has changed at this point, and this is part of the formality that goes forward to town meeting, and if there are any residents, obviously, or anyone who has any questions or any input, they're welcome to speak now and also to speak at town meeting.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the audience? Hearing them, we need to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion so moved.
And a motion also, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, yes, a motion to close the public hearing, and then I can give you a suggested motion.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Mike made it.
I'll second it.
Seconded, all in favor? unanimous? Okay.
And if the board would consider a motion where the Board of Selectmen accept Leonard Lane and Mill Road Extension for further action at the annual town meeting of April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven.
Entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion that we accept our Leonard Lane and Mill Road Extension for the next town meeting.
Okay, motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Our seven oh five appointment, which is right on time, is with Superintendent Schools, Joanne, excuse me, Benton, and the High School Building Committee, Jeffrey Luxembourg and Lisa Mate Bergeron, Jocelyn Lesser and Associates, associates, I'm sorry, the High School Building Project. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be back here.
You're gonna stay back there, Lisa? Let's get you up. Let's share.
Before I begin my presentation, I'd just like to acknowledge all the members of the Building Committee that are here this evening. There are Peggy Kane, Robert Hayes, Jeff Howell, George Hooper, Jack Holloway, Joe Perella, Mike Newhouse, and Mike Tyra. I think I have everybody there. We're here to provide you with an update on the high school project. As you remember, just a quick reminder, back in the summer of two thousand and nine, Wilmington's statement of interest for the high school was one of two hundred and twenty-five projects submitted to the MSBA. On September thirtieth, two thousand and nine, fourteen projects were invited to begin the feasibility study phase, including Wilmington High School. The first order of business was to assemble a high school building committee. The committee is composed of members of the Wilmington Permanent Building Committee as well as school committee members, the selectmen, and school and town staff, and I believe you have a copy of the list in your packets this evening. Once we completed that task, we sent out RFS for an owner's project manager. We had thirty-four firms show interest, twelve ended up applying, and the HSBC interviewed three firms. The HSBC recommended Jocelyn Lesser Associates to the town manager and MSBA for approval. Contract negotiations took place, and Jocelyn Lesser was brought on board, and this evening we have Jeff Luxembourg, who is our OPM, who will give you a brief summary of the activities since that evening.
Good evening, everybody. Just to tell you about some of the things that have been going on with the high school project. First of all, as you know, this is called the feasibility study, and the way the MSBA does feasibility studies in conjunction with the town is it consists of a feasibility study which comes up with a preferred schematic idea, preferred option. You then do a schematic design on that option. So we're in that first phase of looking at feasibility of various options. As part of this, with the school building committee, we've developed evaluation criteria for different items, everything from site, community, the different aspects of the project to provide the basis for how we evaluate those options. Secondly, we started to lay out different options, and we'll talk a little bit about designer selection. The architect has now come on board, and they're helping us look at different options. Some of those will be looking at the existing building, possible renovations, possible additions, possible new construction. We're also looking at other sites, and the MSBA also needs to look at what would happen if you did nothing, a no-build option, and are there other facilities in town? So there's a range of things that are required. It is a thorough analysis of options. At the end of that, we have criteria that we keep using, as I mentioned, and then we come up with, we narrow down the options. You start with, let's say, eight, narrow it eventually down to one, and that one option is what you bring to the MSBA. They need to approve that to go forward to the next stage, which is called schematic design. And then, at the end of the schematic design, we will have a full cost estimate of that option, that final option, and that's what you need to get local approval for. Of course, we get approval from the state, and then you get local approval, and you solidify the budget at that point. After that point, you go on to the full design of the project and then construction. In order to do that, we obviously need an architect on board, and we went through a designer selection process through what's called the Designer Selection Panel for the MSBA. That consists of fifteen members, twelve of which are from the state designated, and three locally designated. We managed the process of bringing in proposals. We got six proposals from different design teams, and with the help of the local group, we reviewed those, and we, in the DSP, reviewed those, and one firm rose to the top, and a second firm came in a close second. So Doran Whittier was the first-ranked firm, and SMMA was the second-ranked firm. The Designer Selection Panel, along with the local group, decided to rank them that way, and the school building committee has awarded a contract to Doran Whittier. Doran Whittier is familiar to the Town of Wilmington. They did the master plan here, but they also have extensive experience on high schools throughout Massachusetts, extensive experience working with the MSBA, and I think that they felt to be a very good fit beyond just having worked there. Their background is broad, and we think very appropriate for this project. The other piece that's important to this is who's going to build this, and the school building committee has voted to approve CM at Risk as an approach on the construction-delivery method. That allows, first of all, to get an additional one percent reimbursement from the Mass School Building Authority. It potentially allows you more, well, it generally proceeds with better quality in selection of both the subcontractors, primarily because the CM comes on board through a qualitative process that includes both the qualifications of the firm and their bids. So it is not a low-bid situation. You can select a low bid, but you don't have to select a low bid for the CM. The subcontractors are divided into two types: trade contractors, where you do have to select a low bid, and non-trade contractors, where there's a vetting process with the CM that's selected. This also allows you to do early packages, so that if the phasing and sequencing of the project, and this is a complicated project, you can bring in the CM and use that CM throughout, so you don't have to use one contractor with an early package and a later contractor with the main package, because there's often conflicts. This way, you have continuity from the beginning. So that's another critical aspect of the project that we've gone through at this point. Finally, as Joanne indicated, we have a schedule. We've laid out a target of fall of two thousand and fourteen. That will, of course, depend on what is the selected option, but that's our target date right now for opening the new school. And as part of this process, which we feel is very open and transparent, we'll have a series of public forums, and first of those is slated for mid-April. We will advertise those, and as Joanne said, there's a website where all this information is going to be available to the general public. So she's passing out the main page of that webpage. We will use that for scheduling. We will post minutes there. So this is a very open and transparent process for the community who's interested in the project. That's sort of a quick summary. I didn't want to go into extensive detail. I figured it would be better for Joanne and I to answer any questions that you might have, and Lisa, also from our office, is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to say a few words on that, Mike?
Only that you can also access that information on the town's homepage as well by clicking on Boards and Committees, and then clicking on the High School Building Committee, and that would bring you to the page that Joanne has spoken about. And I just want to comment on, again, this has been a real collaborative effort, where the school department and a number of people from the municipal side of government have been working closely together, along with folks, the folks that Joanne has mentioned on the school building committee, who really represent a wide range of talent, including the permanent building committee. And so just want to mention that in the past, people have been used to the permanent building committee being the lead committee on a public construction project in Wilmington. In fact, they are still very much involved in this, but under the MSBA guidelines, we have to establish a high school building committee that incorporates the permanent building committee within it. So we are still managing to go forward with the process as we have been used to in the past, along with meeting the obligations that we have with the MSBA. And I just want to stress what both Joanne and Jeff have said, and that this is a very public process. The next meeting, again, to reiterate, is March seventeenth in this room at six-thirty. All of the meetings have been posted. There's information about these meetings all the time. Certainly, don't, you know, we want to emphasize that the meeting, that we welcome participation. The real important time to, I think, participate is at the public information hearings, which will also be meetings. They'll be scheduled as meetings, but they will go directly into a public information mode, and I believe the first one has actually been scheduled, is there, for April twelfth? The first one, just to give you advance notice, has been scheduled for April twelfth, and I think at the high school?
High School Auditorium.
At the High School Auditorium, where you will be able to get at least a first view, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff or Joanne, but you'll get a first view of what the committee has come up with for options, and then we'll be looking forward to input from the community.
Who else on the committee wants to say a few words?
Sure, I think it's already been presented as a very succinct and effective summary of where we're at in light of the town meeting vote that put us there, that said, "We want you to move forward and go through this process and get to the point that the public can then weigh in on the various options and then make a decision on, you know, the funding mechanism, et cetera." One of the things that I keep running into when I talk to folks and they ask me about the status of what's going on with the school building committee and how the process works is showing how it's similar and how it's different to what the town has been through before with the middle school project back in the late nineties or two thousand. And one of the things that I keep saying to people is that I view the older process, if you will, to be like a limited partnership, where we had a limited partner in the state who would put up a certain amount of money, call it fifty percent, and basically just kind of keep an eye on us, make sure we're building a school with it, and that we built something that basically made sense, and that was about it. And with the changes that have occurred, they're now really a general partner who's involved in the day-to-day activities which result in something being put before the town. So for better or for worse, I think that, you know, from my own opinion, my own perspective, I see how some cities and towns haven't necessarily built very efficient projects, and so I understand how the Commonwealth has moved towards being more actively and proactively involved and overseeing the process and making sure that, you know, money is spent wisely. By the same token, you know, it's somewhat more limiting than maybe we would like all the time, but that's the way it goes when you have a fifty percent partner in this thing. So for folks who want a general understanding of the process, we go through a number of requirements that are imposed on us from the Commonwealth, and they're promised to fund half of this project, and they're pretty consistent with what we've done in the past. In any case, for example, we hire an owner's project manager who helps us to evaluate all our options, to help us bring on a design team, who in turn would come up with a hard-cost estimate for a specific project. So that's the process that we're in that I know that Jeff referred to on a number of occasions, but we're going through the process the town meeting directed us to go through and come April, and I would assume May and June, I think we also have other public informational sessions where we, you know, really want the public to come and weigh in. Public is always welcome to attend the working sessions and be privy to the progress that the committee's making, but it's really important for the town in April, May, and June to have that feedback as to our specific alternatives and what direction the town should take. So we want to encourage people to be there for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the fact you put this on the agenda, and I'd like to make a statement and a couple of questions. The whole purpose of me requesting this meeting is so that people in the town who put the bill in this community have a say and a choice at the table. I know we are at its infancy. Simply put, people want choice. I believe the choices are simple. Build a new high school at what cost? Add an addition to the existing high school at what cost? Or just renovate the high school at what cost? Or simply, some folks may not want a high school. I know we need to do something, and I want to have the most intelligent information out there to take a look at. Give people choice, let the taxpayer decide what fits their needs, and I'd just like to, a couple of quick questions, if I could, please. When the contract negotiations between the town and Doran Whittier, will it be, when will it be completed? Also, given the information talked about tonight, either a new high school, renovations of an existing high school, or an addition, would that be incorporated as part of the contract, so therefore people actually can see and decide for themselves where they want to go?
The Building Committee has approved the first part, which is the feasibility and schematic design for the Doran Whittier contract. The MSBA has standardized the architectural contracts for all MSBA projects, so we have to use that contract, so that was a given. The way they've set up that contract, you approve the first phase, and then you negotiate the next phase after you've gotten approval from them of what the preferred schematic, both the preferred schematic and the actual schematic design is done. So we have approval and a contract for this first phase, feasibility to schematic design, and the next phase will depend on what the option is. So the MSBA has standardized what has to be in a feasibility study, what has to be in a schematic design. So all of the options you're talking about will be studied as part of this analysis.
I'm glad to hear that. For the record, I did get up on town meeting floor last year and support the feasibility study. I know we need to do something, but we need to look at all the options, and I know that, you know, we're going to do that, and I hope to think we're going to do it. For me to rally around something, I want to see choice, to be seriously, if I'm going to get involved in it. I think folks out there want to see choice as well. I mean, if we can have six donuts in the town of Wilmington, we sure as heck can have choice of going to spend one point five million dollars, and that's what I want to see happen. And the other question I'd like to ask is, you know, given the opportunity to save money, especially in these tough times, how come the town didn't get involved with the model school program, which, as you know, the model school program can save community like Wilmington millions of dollars, basically copycatting another school? Is there any reason why we didn't get involved in that?
You can only get involved in that if the MSBA requests you to get involved in that. It's not an approach you can apply for. As part of this study, if it was determined it didn't somehow make sense to do that, we could ask the MSBA to get involved with that. The model schools work well when you're building a new school on a flat piece of land where you don't have an existing school in the way, that type of thing. Basically, they've been put on flat pieces of property, usually behind existing schools, and that may not be the most cost-effective approach here. What saves you money in the model school? One is getting it to market sooner because of the economy right now, although generally depressed and not great for whatever. It is good for building right now because the prices are lower than it has been in the past. That's one benefit of the model school. The fact that it is already designed, so to speak, speeds up the design process, which allows you to get to market sooner, saves you a little bit on architectural fees. However, you have to work your program into that model school. So if your program is not a match for the model school, you have to make modifications to that, and we're involved with one project where it's not in the model school, but they've modified a model school to do it, and you have to make sure it fits with the program. The MSBA has not chosen to select Town of Wilmington for a model school primarily because of what the site looks like and that if you have to modify the plan so much, you're losing the benefit of taking them off the shelves, so to speak. So, and then one of the benefits is extra reimbursement points. We will, however, be looking to maximize reimbursement points. I mentioned the CM at Risk, which does give you one additional incentive point. We are going to be looking to do what's called a green school approach, sustainable design, which gets you two extra percentage points, and that if you were to do renovation, in part of it, you get a sliding scale for that. So we will be looking to maximize the incentive points. The model school is, in essence, an incentive point. But again, you have not been invited into the model school program. You need to be invited to even consider it, and we will, but we can potentially see if it does make any sense when we look at the options. But given where the building is, given where your fields are, it might not, at the end of the day, be cost-effective to do a model school, even if they were to invite you in. So again, we will look at all options, including that, as part of the feasibility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I would like us to at least pursue that option if it's available to the town. It may not be, but I would like to at least get a commitment, and from hearing you, it sounds like it's going to be a commitment, that if there's an opportunity for us to do that, I'd like to see us take that approach, if possible, if we can do that. You know, it just, I imagine, so I can't imagine that there's not a school out there that had an existing building, didn't follow in that program, even if it was in that area. I would hope to think that there is a school out there that has done that. When you talk about flatland, we're talking about raw property. If you had raw property, I understand what you're saying, makes sense of putting a new building on the raw property, and you may follow that program, but if we can look at all the options, that's all I'm looking at, you know, what's available, you know, just to take a look.
We will look at that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up to what Selectman McCoy had to say, when we have these options, as Mr. McCoy just said, there's like three or four proposals, in other words, when do they actually go to the town meeting? In other words, how will they be voted on? Option A, option B, or they will just, you will have one random vote and then take that to the town meeting? Is that how it's going to work?
Yeah, the way the MSBA has set up this process is we will have these series of public forums. We will have a lot of discourse on the various options, what the costs are, and then we will narrow those options. The MSBA requires you to bring one option to them as a preferred option. They then let you flush that option out through schematic design. So the town meeting vote that you will need will be on the one option. That's why we've put in this schedule, these public forums, because the input has to come in early. We don't flush out and fully design three different options. We flush out what the benefits of each option are, what the detriments of each option are, and then we get public input, and then the Building Committee sort of guides that process using the MSBA guidelines, and then we come out with a preferred option that gets voted on by the MSBA board. We develop that, and that's the one you bring to town meeting. We've asked this elsewhere. The process just doesn't allow for you to bring to town meeting option A or option B, and whoever gets the most votes for which option, and you go with. You have to develop one option through this process. So we've been very successful in other places using this sort of public forum approach, bring people in during the process and help guide the process, and then usually by the time you get to town meeting, there's a real momentum for the preferred option, because people have been seeing it, commenting on it, guiding it, that kind of thing.
Thank you. That's why I wanted to clarify, like, you know, people hear options, but then, you know, the formula, how are they going to get to that town meeting? And that's what I want you to clarify. And I guess, under those options, I guess, which, you know, would be looked at is, how would the, when is it determined, like, when, how much the state's going to, you know, give to each proposal? When would that be determined? When will that be shown?
It's formally determined at the end of that schematic design. They do something called a project scope and budget meeting, and we sit down with the MSBA, and they work out what's included, what's not included, and the reimbursement rate, which, there's a base rate, which is based on statistics that you have. You can add to that the CM at Risk, which is one percent. You can add to that maintenance, which they usually give one percent for that. The green schools is two percent. A renovation can be a part of a percent. So you add all those up, and that's your reimbursement rate. And then the question is, are all the items eligible? So that, it is all flushed out at this project scope and budget meeting, but by the time we get a cost estimate in this early phase, we will have a handle on approximately what the reimbursement would be, you know, under certain assumptions. But then, after the project scope and budget, there's a form that could sign locally where they actually tell you what the rate is and what their estimated grant is. So you do get that before you go to town meeting.
I just have probably a question and a half. Do you have any idea of, you know, the projection of this project? In other words, roughly a starting date, if everything went, and probably almost a finish date, how long our project would take?
Well, depending on what the option is, and how much is addition or how much is renovation, it will vary, but we are shooting for opening the school in the fall of two thousand and fourteen. So we are looking for construction to start on the main, probably November of next year. But in order to do, meet that schedule, we're looking at early packages as early as late spring of next year. So spring of two thousand and twelve might be some early packages, and construction starting in earnest in fall of, you know, late fall of two thousand and twelve.
And I'd like to just finish it up, that I know that education is an important thing, especially in today's society, and, you know, getting the best for kids and, you know, moving them along and, you know, learning from, you know, the parents, you know, to, you know, more or less get a better education and a better lifestyle. So I definitely know it's very important, and especially growing up the way, you know, way I have, I understand it in the old fifties, but getting on with it, that I think also we do have to do something with these schools. You know, we did the middle school, and it turned out that we, you know, works good. In fact, we do a lot of, you know, important business ourselves as selectmen, and we use the auditorium over there and everything, and it works very well, and I think we need to go into the next step. Again, I'll agree with whatever the public does, but I definitely know we need to move ahead. And the last thing I'd like to finish with it, just to the public guys, that I know in two years, we're going to have a new fiscal manager, possibly, and I think if we're going to do a project in this size, you never know what you're going to get ahead. So, and I thank the man to my right to work, and he's shown the proven track record that he can make numbers work, and he doesn't give a hardship even to the seniors in this town, that, you know, services are all we've been going, and I think if we're going to take on any kind of a project, even renovations, whatever, I think, you know, we're going to have to go with what we have right here to the right. I think he has a proven record, probably one of the best that the town's ever seen, and I think he can handle it and actually get the best that this town can receive as far as the best money, and he spends that money just like it's his own. So, you know, he's a very thrifty, working under him, and I think even the Board of Selectmen, I think it's been a fine bunch, and the town's been moving forward, and I think this project, along with the real substance of this man, I think we can get the best, and I think the town and the children behind it will be well happy with the proceeds.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, a bunch of great questions, so I don't have a lot to add to them. I guess I want to make sure that we compliment all the members of the committee that have been working so diligently so far, doing so after hours and in your own time. So all of you that are out there, thank you very much, and I know there's probably some other members that weren't here this evening, but they've been going to these meetings all along. It's, I've attended a few of the meetings, and there's a lot of information being disseminated and coming out and being discussed, and it's a lot to digest, so I appreciate the hard work that you're all doing on behalf of us, the community. Mr. Lepore said it eloquently, "Education is what defines us as a community. It defines, I think, for the future generations..." It defines, I think, for the future generations. It says an awful lot about what we and how serious we take their, their future and what kind of a community we want them to have when they are raising their families. If we ignore it and hope that they'll take care of it later when it's their turn, I think we do them a disservice. So it's our turn, right? We have to, we have to take care now of what our children will need and what, what they will need for their children. So, you know, this is a really, really important time for the town of Wilmington. And that being said, I want to encourage all residents that are watching this broadcast and maybe watching it on tape, please make a point to carve out some time, because maybe you don't have children, but, or maybe your children are grown. This community is, this town is, to you, what you've made it for yourself, but look around and, and consider what position you want to have or what say you want to have in what this town is for the future generations. It's your opportunity now to go and have your voice heard. And so there's an ample number of meetings coming up. I think the first of which, March 17th, which is a meeting of the committee, but, you know, again, you can, you can go and listen to those meetings, and the first public forum on April 12th at the high school auditorium. You have an opportunity to have a say in what gets developed, what kind of a program, what kind of a school, what the options are that get considered and ultimately get constructed. So please, participate in this process. And frankly, if you don't participate in the process and you come to town meeting next fall and complain, I'd rather you just didn't come to town meeting and complain. That said, remind me, if I could ask you, Jeff, to just go over some of the schedule again. You talked about, are we looking at a special town meeting for fall to make some of this happen, or has that been decided? I'm not sure.
I don't think that's, obviously, we have to do the study first to find out, you know, each step, we have an overall plan in order to open this thing in, in, you know, in fall of 2014. However, we, we, you know, at each stage, we, you know, we have to get approvals from the MSBA board. We need locally people to be, agree on a concept, so any dates I give you are sort of predicated on that. But I think we are looking for fall, I think it's fall of 2000, and, fall of this year, for late fall, I think it's early December, early December. Looking for early December, around first week of December for first of town meeting and followed by debt exclusion vote. Those will be, have to be scheduled, they'll be scheduled as a special.
And that would need, that would need to take place in order for the, frankly, for the construction start of fallish of '12, 2012, and an opening of 2014 to probably to stay on track. Is that effectively true?
Yes, the primary money for the design is included in the next phase, so in order to do that, design takes roughly a year, maybe slightly less, but, so we need that approval in order to design the building and then start construction.
Lastly, it's conceivable, maybe you already said it, and I apologize if I ask you to repeat yourself, it's conceivable that the end result or the end determination that the town votes for and that gets approved by MSBA could be some hybrid of new and refurbished or something to that effect. Is that on the radar screen as a possibility?
That was one of the options that Michael had suggested, which is sort of a renovation addition kind of thing.
That would delay, then we wouldn't be able to do it in, open in 2014, right?
Depending on how much, yeah, the, the, to be aware, the more renovation that's involved, the, you would open part of the building in 2014 and have to come back and finish other parts of the building. Because if you, you can't renovate occupied space, so you would, you would build something, open that in 2014, then move into that, and then come back and finish. And, and if we're, if you were building a totally new building, demolition would occur also after that. So this is occupiable, when we talk about fall of 2014, it's occupiable space for the predominant amount would be fall of 2014. There would still be work going on almost under any scenario after that.
Great. I have no more questions. Thank you very much for coming and helping us understand this process better.
Thank you for having us come.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I just wanted to make two comments, one on the schedule and one on the reimbursement rate. With regard to the schedule, as has been said, it is in a large measure dependent upon our meeting the MSBA's schedule, so that they, they meet certain times, and we need to be ready to make our submissions to their, to meet their schedule in order for us to go forward with our schedule. With regard to a town meeting and a debt exclusion vote, that is the, the aegis of this committee. The Board of Selectmen will make that determination, as you all know, but just for the public to be clear. And we'll, we'll make a recommendation to the board. It'll be up to them to determine whether the town meeting comes first or whether the special election for the debt exclusion comes first. They will make that determination. There's nothing, there's nothing that says one happens before the, before the other. The appropriation would obviously appropriate the funds, the debt exclusion would allow you to have the debt exclusion with regard to the taxation going forward on a limited basis, and then reverting back, similar to what we've experienced with the, with the middle school and the public safety building. And hopefully, that'll happen by early December, but it could happen any time in that, in that timeframe. And clearly, I think, when you mentioned the different options, the, one of the goals, one of the earlier goals that the committee, the high school building committee has set out, was to be as least disruptive as possible to the students. And I think that's very important, that whatever we end up choosing, whether it's a renovation process or a combination, a hybrid or a straight new construction, that we need to do so, keeping in mind who we're doing this for, and that's the kids. And we want to be very careful that we don't create a situation where you've got students having a disrupted high school experience. So that, that'll all be part of the options, I think, and you'll be able to see whether there would be delays and what the cost of those delays might be, dependent upon the different options. With regard to the reimbursement rate, we have a reimbursement rate, a base rate, as Jeff indicated, right now, for the feasibility study. And let me be clear on the number. The number that the town appropriated was $1,125,000. We did that without borrowing, which is almost unheard of. I don't know another community that has, that has done that, with the exception of Danvers, I think, which is, which somehow is able to, I think they're trying to go forward without borrowing at all, God bless them if they can do it. But $1,125,000 that came from our available funds within the operating budget. The number is, I think, and Jeff or Joanne can correct me, Jeff Hall, I believe it's 48.57%. That is what we have right now as a baseline number. So if you have $1,125,000, you can pretty much divide that by two, that's going to all be reimbursed, because there's no question we're going to be reimbursed for these, for these costs. As Jeff indicated, going forward, you're going to see that number increase. And just adding up the, the different numbers that he's talked about, we're probably looking at around anywhere from 52, 53% or so as a reimbursement rate. In any event, what you can think of in terms of this is that whatever it costs, half of it is going to be paid for by the state. You know, generally, that's, that's the way it's going to, it's going to work out. And obviously, we can't give you those numbers yet with any specificity until after this process goes forward. And then, just as we did with the middle school project, we will give you the implications of all of those numbers and how they would affect any, any property owners. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else from the board?
I would also just like to thank the committee for all the work that you've done. And the residents should know out there that this has been an amazing process to this point, and a lot of work has gone into, to this process to get to this point. And just let it be known that your, your town is well represented out there at all these meetings at state level with the, with the MSBA, and all the hours that these, this committee has been doing is, it's pretty amazing stuff when you, when you see it happening. So I, again, like to thank the committee for all their hard work and, and looking forward to moving forward with this. Go ahead.
I just want to conclude by inviting anyone in the public who'd like to see what the high school looks like with the students we have in it, and the fact you've heard me say that right now, we're not meeting the needs of the students because we don't have spaces large enough to fit the program. I'd be glad to give tours to anyone who'd like to see the current high school in session, because I think that would help the public in their decision moving forward. I know this is probably one of the biggest decisions Wilmington residents will be making in the next few years, and I want to give them as much information as I can, so they can call the Roman House, and I'd be glad to set up a tour.
Anticipate in the meetings, obviously, would be good. Any questions or comments from the audience, the committee members that are out there? Mr. O'Reilly?
Jerry O'Reilly, Wildwood Street. I've got four, four items. One was earthquake. Drayton Fair or Taffays talked about the library and that it couldn't be added to because of the change in the laws for seismic activity. Point one, will there be a sewer, sewer line run to the high school? I think there's a 100,000 gallon holding tank there now that's pumped out three times a year. And I think it would be important to have a sewer line there. The tank is probably in violation of Title V, I'm not sure. And there was an oil spill at the high school a long time ago, and it's never really been totally cleaned up. Will that be done? And the plans show the athletic expansion into the veronal pool. I don't think it can backfill the veronal pool. Those are the four comments that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, will we comment on the sewer line?
You've already got this in writing. I've sent it to you several times. Nobody has acknowledged that you got it. And it probably would be nice to say, yes, thank you, we got the information.
We can't receive the information, and I believe we sent it to you.
With regard to this, with regard to the sewer line and most of what Mr. O'Reilly's talking about, all of that is going to be, going to be looked at. As a matter of fact, at our last meeting, we talked specifically about sewer at the last working session. We want to see what it would, what it would cost. I certainly would love to see it extended. I think that gives us more room to work with on the, on the site, if it turns out that that's the site. So absolutely, the sewer line is an option. We've already put the architectural team in touch with Mr. Woods, and so that's, that's an ongoing process. Mr. Hooper, who is here, is very familiar with the, with the site and is really a point person on all of this construction with the OPM and with the architect, and certainly will be dealing with that spill that you talked about, which occurred, I believe, back in the 80s, I think, is, is when that happened. And we've, we've dealt with that. We actually have information that we, that we have on, on that. There were two other questions, and I think they're probably, yeah, you, you were referring, Mr. O'Reilly, to a, to what you saw on a drawing that was prepared as one of the potential options for where you could relocate fields?
I think it shows all four options.
All four options, yeah. And the, the most recent iterations of that, which are going to be discussed on March 17th at the public meeting, take that into consideration. And as a matter of fact, some of those, some of the same drawings are not a part of that drawing anymore. We are looking, clearly, I don't want to mislead anybody, we're, we're looking to utilize that Wildwood Street site that the town took by eminent domain, but we're looking to do that without any environmental impact on the site.
So bad you didn't buy me out.
We'd love to buy you out.
Yes, it's expensive now.
Well, I figured if you do it for the town, Mr. O'Reilly, we'll name, we'll name the field after you.
Celine Morris said to me, Celine Morris said to me one time, you'll always be stuck there, you'll never get anything.
O'Reilly Park, 978-658-3311. Call me tomorrow, we'll make an appointment.
I am totally in favor of a brand new high school.
I know you.
I think the site may have problems, and I have suggested this site here as a, for new high school, and possibly Sharapa Farm, you could use that, and the Yentel property was ideal.
Well, let me, again, just, those are the kinds of things that are being looked at, and we looked at your recommendation, and so the...
Nobody gets back to you on it.
Well, I'm getting back to you now. I, I didn't get that letter, but, but, but the option that we're talking about with regard to this, this place here is being looked at. That is one of, one of the options. The option with regard to Yentel Farm, there's only 10 usable acres there, so that, that's problematic. But this option is being looked at. The, with regard to Sharapa Farm, we have reached out to them, they've not been responsive, and that's, that's the way it goes. That, the cost for that, the last time we checked with them, they were looking for upwards to $7 million for the property. None of that would be reimbursed by the, by the state. That's not a part of the reimbursement formula. I don't want to get too far ahead here on the options, because that's not the purpose of this, but I just, I, I want you to understand that anybody who sends us anything, we're, we're paying attention to that, and that...
I hope so.
That will come out in the option. And I'm delighted that you are in favor of a new high school, and I would be happy to sit down and talk to you about your property. I know you're a fan man, and you wouldn't want to gouge the town.
There's a lot we get to talk about.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Mr. Segal?
Yes, there's been a number of comments about people could get involved in these meetings and should attend the meetings, the, the high school building committee meeting, the other meetings. I would, I would think it's, it's of value to stress that the public hearings, I believe the first one was on the 12th of April, right? Is the place where the public can be involved. They can observe at the other meetings, but they're not invited to speak. So it's, it's excellent to attend these other meetings or see them on television and whatnot, but if you really want to get involved and have your voice heard, I think you really need to, to stress that the public hearings are the place to do that. The, what I've been told, there's been three public hearings, because there's a number of these meetings, and they're very informative to watch, but a lot of times they're talking about things that they have in their packet that aren't available to the, to the public, and it's not as easy to follow along as you might feel. And there is no, you know, there aren't any comments from the galleries at a lot of these meetings. So I think it's very important for people to realize that, that if they want to have their voice heard, they got to go to these public hearings. It's nice to hear it on television and see these different meetings, but it's also, if you want to speak...
I'm pretty sure that's what Jeff went over. You might have been a little late, but I'm pretty sure that's what he went over when he first started the... But that is good information. Thank you.
Yes.
Is that it for the, thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you all.
Okay, our next agenda item is the Board of Selectmen discussion. We're going to review of the proposed town meeting warrant. Have the town manager go over them again?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, we've done this now the last two meetings, first with regard to the citizen petitions, and at the last meeting, the, the petitions are the articles that are being brought forward through the Board of Selectmen. And so I will just go through this very quickly. If the board wants anything, anything to be highlighted, be happy to do that. But the point of all this now is just to introduce the warrant one last time, so that the board can vote at the end of the meeting to sign the warrant, close the warrant, and all of the major discussion will take place at the next, tomorrow night, at the Finance Committee public hearing. So I think that's a time when particularly those people who are offering the citizen petitions will want to be at that meeting in order to present their viewpoint. So the meeting begins with the election, which is on April 23rd. The polls are open from 8 to 8 at the three voting locations, at the Beltwell School for Precincts 1 and 2, the Wildwood School for Precincts 3 and 4, and here at the Town Hall for Precincts 5 and 6. If you're not certain where you vote, you're welcome to call the town clerk's office. And you will be electing on that date, under Article 1, two selectmen for the term of three years, two members of the school committee for the term of three years, one member of the housing authority for the term of five years, and a member of the redevelopment authority for the term of five years. Article 2 and Article 3 will be passed over. One is to hear reports of committees from the last meeting, the Rondo Committee reports from the last town meeting, and Article 3 would be to pay unpaid bills of previous years. There are no unpaid bills to be paid. Article 4 is a standard article authorizing the treasurer-collector to enter into an agreement with, with banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Again, a standard article that the selectmen permit the treasurer-collector to engage for banking services. Article 5 is the budget article for all of the operating budgets in town, every municipal department, the school department, and other... department, the school department and other budget-related items that, that are miscellaneous in nature that refer to both school and town. And we have been through that, I guess ad nauseam through the Finance Committee meetings all through the month of, month of February. And again, people are encouraged to ask any questions on, on these items at the public hearing. Article 6 will appropriate funds for the purchase of replacement cruisers, a rapid response vehicle for the fire department, cargo vans for the public buildings department, vehicles for the Department of Public Works, including a pickup truck with cap and plow, a replacement skid steer loader, and a replacement heavy duty catch basin cleaner truck. All of these will be, vehicles will be assigned to the Highway Division. I realize I'm going quickly, but this is really kind of pro forma at this time and we've already been through these, particularly with regard to a review of the cost and everything else, but just shout out if somebody has a question. Also, a replacement wheelchair accessible transport van for the elderly services department and a wheelchair accessible minivan to be purchased for the school department. Article 7 involves the roof repair projects at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, at the public buildings department, and at the public works department headquarters. Article 8 continues our program to upgrade fire alarm systems in the school department and in this case, we would be doing the North Intermediate School and the Woburn Street School following last year's completion of work at the Wildwood School and the Shawshin School. Article 9 replaces a high force hot air, energy efficient furnace at the Bartwell Early Childhood Center. Article 10 appropriates money to replace windows and doors at the Wilmington Memorial Library. Article 11 will make improvements to various school and recreation play areas around town, including the Woburn Street School, tennis courts, the fencing there, the Bartwell, the tennis courts and, and basketball courts outside of the Bartwell School where we will resurface the courts and also repair the fencing. And then the repair of the various play structures over at the Justin O'Neill Skate Park, which is located on the grounds of the Shawshin School. Article 12 continues the program to appropriate funds for miscellaneous improvements to take, undertake various improvements and repairs to municipal and school facilities, as we did this past year, that particularly allows us to address emergency needs, allows us to fund town share of grant programs, gets us involved in addressing energy efficiencies, mechanical system needs, et cetera. Article 13 will transfer money in the, within the 2011 budget. The 2011 budget is the budget that we're currently working with. We will take a look at certain accounts that may be in deficit and look at other accounts that are in surplus and we'll go to the town and try to make those adjustments. For example, snow and ice. Obviously, snow and ice is, have been overspent more likely to the tune of somewhere between $200,000 and $250,000. We do have funds in the trash account that we think will be able to move towards that as an example. Gas, you, we're paying what you're paying for the most part at the pump, although we did very well in locking in our fuel oil at, don't anybody throw anything but $2.20 per gallon, which we all wish we had, and that too is going to end soon. We don't have that same luxury with regard to gasoline prices. It's a spot market situation and we, we pay and so that, that could be a problem. All in all, however, I'm suggesting that there's not going to be any major problem with meeting any of the deficit accounts in this way, as far as we can, toward the town meeting so we can make reasonably good decisions as to the direction we're going in. Article 14 continues the town's senior citizen tax work off program. Article 15 appropriates money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Article 16 appropriates funds for the two veteran clubhouses in town. Article 17 continues and reauthorizes revolving accounts for the compost bin program as well as the Title V septic loan program. Article 18 transfers funding to, from the MTBE Products Liability Litigation Account to the Water Fund. Article 19 would ask the town to consider the imposition of a local meals tax, which we've had discussions on. And if anybody has any questions or wants to continue discussing, I'm sure there'll be lots of discussion on this tomorrow night. Article 20 continues the process we talked about earlier with regard to the acceptance of streets, in this case, Mill Road Extension and Runnend Lane. Then the next article, which is Article 21, is the, the article that was requested by the town clerk and that was to accept a portion of the mass, provision of the mass general law that would enable the town on certain dates to be closed on a Saturday. And specifically what this is, is dependent upon when the calendar, how the calendar runs, there are times when you have to be open on a Saturday to, for example, register folks to vote. And so this would, if, if the town accepts this provision, this would allow the town to move that date instead of being that Saturday to the prior Friday. It's done in most communities. Frankly, we've probably done it without having accepted the provisions. I'm not sure I want to, you know, swear on a Bible that that's never happened, but in, in looking at what the town back in 1959, and believe it or not, I was just a lad, the town apparently had this go before the town meeting and for whatever reason, our research says no action was taken. I suspect there are more errands to do now on Saturdays and people would not have an objection, but we shall see a town meeting. Article 22 is something that the police chief is recommending and that is to establish a curfew in public parks, playgrounds and fields. This is specifically to parks, playgrounds and fields where he wants to be able to have some enforcement authority, really to, to move older young folk when, you know, when it, there's not a whole lot of good things that happen at 12:30 or 1 o'clock in the morning at a playground. And, you know, we end up seeing what happens the next day, unfortunately. And the chief is looking for some enforcement authority and he needs that through a bylaw. The chairman has already indicated that he would like to have the chief in to explain this. He will be there on the 15th tomorrow, but he will be, I believe, at the next meeting to discuss this particular article and the other two articles that he's putting forward. And those articles have to do with the regulation of dealers and junk, old metals and secondhand articles. That's another situation. The chief is going to be much more eloquent in describing the reason for this, about the potential for businesses, as we've seen in other communities, to locate and to get into this kind of business where they are essentially operating as a higher level pawn shop. And sometimes that can be problematic, particularly with stolen goods and those kinds of things. He wants to be able to regulate that in a, in a better way. And so he has worked with town council on that and he is the best person to, to explain this. So he will be on the agenda, thanks to the chairman agreeing to schedule him for the next meeting where he will discuss those three articles, the curfew article and the two articles that relate to the regulation of secondhand junk essentially and the regulation of pawn brokers. Finally, Article 25, you will recall for the last meeting, Selectman Newhouse raised some concerns about a petitioned article that sought to amend the charter for the town of Wilmington by removing a clause with regard to, and I skipped one article, I'll go back to it, with regard to requiring that the town manager be a resident of the town of Wilmington. And that was a citizen petition article that seeks to remove that. Personally, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good, good decision. It's a good movement. I don't think you should limit where the, where the professional who will manage your, your government in the future lives. And the board apparently agreed on a five to nothing vote because the citizen's petition article had the potential of being flawed, that it may not have been in the correct legal form. Town council was asked to prepare an article that would meet the, the parameters that are necessary to go forward for a charter change and that has been done by Mr. Foskett. And that's the new article that the board has before him. That's Article 26. Article 25 is a repeat of an article that was introduced in 2009, which would again exempt the town of Wilmington from liability with regard to the Maple Meadow landfill site. This was something that went forward with legislation that died in the last session. And so we've had discussions with the legislative delegation and they indicated through Senate Council's office that they could not just simply go forward with this petition because they felt it was, in their words, stale. And therefore, if it were going to come up again, it had to again go through a town meeting process to bring it forward so you would have this special act that would ultimately exempt the town from the liability from the Maple Meadow landfill.
Mr. Kyra, real briefly, I'm sorry if I may, on, on Article 26, again, having you discussed the issue, this is the one, if the town were to vote in the affirmative to allow our future town managers to live in, in another community, this vote is to petition the general court.
Right.
So the general court has to approve of our request to them that we change the charter. Yes, is that the process?
That's, that's the second piece.
Okay.
The first piece is the town meeting action, the second piece is the legislation and the third piece would be a vote at a future town election, a referendum vote.
I see. Okay, thank you.
So if you're going to change the town charter, it has to go through all of that.
What would the timelines be or do you, from past experience, if we were to vote this spring to send it to general court, how fast would they turn that around?
We would hope that they would make a decision before the end of the legislative session, which typically would end, you know, in the, in the fall or early winter. And then I think what we would do is rather than have a special election, you know, just put it on the next ballot, the spring election ballot.
Thank you.
I think it's how, I think that's how it worked the last time. The town made a change in '03 and filling the vacancies of the Board of Selectment. I think that's the exact timeline that it took.
Okay, thanks.
And then there are the petitioned articles and all of the petitioners are certainly welcome to come tomorrow night. It's at 7:00 and it's at the, right here at the Town Hall Auditorium. And I don't know if you wanted to, did you want to go over those articles at this point or read them in? I don't think it's necessary unless you want, you want to read them in. It's up to you. We'll be doing that tomorrow night. We'll be doing that tomorrow night and we've done it on two other cases already. Do you feel like we should read them in now? Okay.
It's all set.
It'll be here tomorrow night.
It's been read at previous meetings. I think they're effectively read in.
Right. Tomorrow night. Thank you. Communications? Mr. Chairman, there's a series of communications that we have with regard to Wilmington Whispering Pines. I just wanted to, we've got some additional communications today that I wanted to just And this last piece that I'm passing out really gets to the, to the end result. This, this is a copy that we received in the office today, copy of a decision that was provided to Wilmington Whispering Pines by the chairman of the Wilmington Board of Appeals, Charles Boyle. A please be advised, the Wilmington Board of Appeals, that their meeting at March 9th, 2011, in accordance with the provisions of the CMRs, voted that the change to the comprehensive permit issued in the above referenced matter, as described in the Wilmington Whispering Pines Letter of February 22nd, namely the reduction of the percentage of age restricted units from 100% of the 48 units to 80% of the 48 units, was deemed by the board to be an insubstantial change. Therefore, in accordance with the provisions of the CMRs, the permit shall be deemed modified to incorporate said change. So they agreed to reduce the age restricted units from 100% to 80%. And you have a series of letters here, including the letter that notified residents in Abuthers regarding the Board of Appeals meeting, that the board requested be sent at the last meeting, which was done, as well as a letter from Kristen Coste, the permitting agent for Wilmington Whispering Pines, thanking the board for giving them the opportunity to update them back at the February 28th meeting and also clarifying the answers on several of the questions that were asked. You also have letters here from residents, including Anthony and Antoinette de Furia, Susan and Edward McGrath and Jean Frizzio, and if I'm pronouncing that wrong, I apologize. Some in favor, some opposed to the proposed change of age restriction at Whispering Pines. And you have additional letters as well from Paul and Dot Carey that we were just provided with, from a Douglas Chisholm, from Elizabeth Harriman, who is in Abuthers, and from Denise McHugh. And they, many of these letters raise their objections to any changes in the project. That decision was rendered by the Board of Appeals on Wednesday night. They did seek town council's advice and received an advisory opinion from town council that indicated that based upon his review of the law, that he found that it was, in fact, in his view, it would be determined to be an insufficient change, or an insubstantial change. Pardon me. I don't know if the board had any questions or comments, but essentially it's, it's over.
I, you know, I, I guess I have a comment and it's, I'm a little embarrassed to say it's not an awful lot, if not specifically and directly related to this terminology of insubstantial change. At the end of the day, our town council had cited similar communities that had gone through a change in the, the age complexion and it was determined that those were insubstantial changes in those cases. And town council had strongly suggested that the, I forget, the Housing Board of Appeals, I can't remember exactly what the, what the department is at the state level, would have, would have, I guess, reversed a decision if the, if our Board of Appeals had, had deemed it a substantial change. So I was at the meeting where this was deliberated and discussed at the, at the Board of Appeals and I, you know, I, I think there's some emotion about this, this property and about this decision. And I want those that weren't at the meeting and those that weren't there during the deliberations and discussion to know that it was a heartfelt discussion. It took a long time, that every angle was looked at. It was, every, every resident's opinion was duly considered and the, the decision was rendered. And in my opinion, I think the correct decision was rendered, but I, you know, everything you said strategically or procedurally is indeed true. I guess I just wanted to, from an opinion standpoint, say that I was impressed with the way that the Board of Appeals handled the discussion and a vote was taken and the majority, majority vote stood. If I may, Mr. Kyra, there is one letter that was penned here from Mrs. McGrath. She owns one of the units and she, there's a sentence here that says, "The entrance into Whispering Pines is very dark. Whether walking or driving is very dark." Whether walking or driving is very dark, and indeed, and safety is an issue." This person has called Redding Municipal Light Company, and they expressed, to express her concern, and they suggested that she get in touch with the Board of Selectmen. So she copied this letter to the Board of Selectmen. I'm not sure what authority we have here, but I would ask through you if we could address whether or not there is a lighting issue in front of this property, a lighting issue that we have control or direction over. Perhaps we can accommodate their request in that regard. That's all. Thank you.
Want to go forward?
You're good down here, right?
The board has a letter from Jeff Zellers, who is the attorney for the Richardson Trust, given us an update with regard to that property. And he wrote a letter, and the bottom line was that he was repeating the trustee's determination that the town of Wilmington was not the appropriate recipient of the, of this process. He said that as part of the process, the trustee met with two organizations, the Trustees of Reservations and Historic New England, citing that they have long track records in this area. You will recall that we wrote on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Historical Commission urging them to consider the Wilmington Community Farm Group. To that, and this was written, I would think, maybe two months ago now, because we had to get it in before January twentieth. To that point, he writes, "While the trustee appreciates the town's suggestion that he consider the Wilmington Community Farm, Inc., this entity is not qualified as a tax-exempt entity that would allow a distribution to it to be made on an estate tax deductible basis." In addition, the Wilmington Community Farm does not have a track record and does not have the financial resources of the other two groups that he mentioned, Trustees of Reservations and Historic New England. And that the trustee also has concerns that the proposed use of the farm would be in violation of the existing restriction agreement. I'm not sure I would necessarily agree with that, but nevertheless, I think the handwriting was on the wall, and we knew that it wasn't going to go forward with WCF based upon their trustee's positions. After discussions with the two groups, the trustee identified Historic New England as a recipient of the property that meets the terms of the Winifred Richardson Trust. And it goes on to speak to that and to indicate that Historic New England expressed a desire to work cooperatively with the town's Historic Commission in connection with the historic restrictions on the property. Obviously, this has been provided to Mrs. Harris and the Historical Commission. The board has a memorandum from Senator Tarr regarding fiscal year two thousand and eleven snow and ice federal aid. Senator Tarr was kind enough to provide us with this information regarding the possibility of snow and ice funding. We are going to pursue that. In fact, prior to getting this memorandum, we had already filed an initial damage assessment report with MEMA for any of the town's costs that were associated with the storm of January eleventh and twelfth. And this is just the first step in the process to determine whether or not the town is eligible for FEMA assistance. Now that the area was declared a disaster for Middlesex County and other counties, we will be preparing additional detailed documentation for the town's eligible cost. Senator Tarr also wrote with an update of the Chapter ninety funding for Massachusetts this year, this is for road and bridge repairs, and he talked about a House bill that has been filed by Governor Patrick, which has yet to be passed, but if it does go forward, it would represent an overall forty-five million dollar increase over the previous Chapter ninety allocation of one hundred and fifty-five million. The town is anticipating receiving around five hundred and ninety thousand dollars from this particular source. The board has a letter from Patricia Muse, the treasurer from the Shawshing Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District, that includes a copy of the fiscal year two thousand and twelve Shawshing budget, including the town's projected assessment of three million two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is slightly less than what the town has budgeted for. It's my recommendation that we stay with the town's budgeted figure, just in the event that any changes in local aid skew this upward, but skew this upward. But at this point, this number is fine, as far as we're concerned for budget purposes. You also have a copy of the letter that was received from, that was sent from the MSBA to Mr. Lyons at the Shawshing Valley Regional School District, enclosing the fully executed project funding agreement for the Shawshing Technical High School construction project, which we have spoken about in prior meetings. Again, they're also going through an MSBA project. There is much more limited in scope. It's about a four million dollar project at the school. We have a memorandum from Tina Stewart, the library director, extending an invitation to the Board of Selectmen to the Friends Appreciation Night on Thursday, March seventeenth, at seven p.m. The Friends of the Library provide tremendous financial and volunteer support, and they make it possible that the level of service that's provided by the library is, would otherwise be unattainable. So I think it's certainly important that we support them. Unfortunately, this is the same night as the school building committee meeting, but I do want to mention this to the board, that they're invited to that particular meeting on the seventeenth. We also have a letter from Charles Anton, president of Anton's Cleaners, with regard to the Coats for Kids program, thanking the town of Wilmington for participating in this past year's Coats for Kids collection drive. It was pretty successful here. We fill the bins several times over, and we want to thank many of the folks, the town employees and others, who provided these coats, and we certainly appreciate that. We'll have to decide whether there's another worthy charity next year. I think the Wilmington, the Women of Wilmington, I believe, are doing something similar, so perhaps it's something we would want to get involved with next year. The board also has a letter from Mary Friere, the franchise service manager for Verizon FiOS, going over what else but rate increases for the FiOS TV premium entertainment packages. Again, you wonder why we bring this forward, but we really have to, as the Board of Selectmen is a franchise authority, and they're required to formally notify the board whenever there's a change. Those of you who are subscribers will receive or have received your own information.
Hate to be tested on all the changes in one year.
The board is being asked to consider a request from Joe Maria Mahoney, the president of Wilmington, to use the town common on Saturday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, at ten a.m., to conduct the Women of Wilmington first annual run for Wilmington. I note that Joe Marie is here with Michelle Bryan, who is the vice president and the race director. They were here before the Board of Selectmen at a prior meeting, and at that time, and they've outlined this to the board in their letter, at that time, they were looking for permission to conduct the road race in the area of the Shawshing School. But they were also advised to meet with the police department to go over the route. After having met with the police department, the police department suggested that there would be a better route in their mind, and that would be to follow the same route that the Fourth of July race follows. And so they're anxious to move on this, but obviously, this is a decision of the board in order to enable them now to use the town common, and also to give them permission for a different race route, and that's why this is back before the Board of Selectmen.
Any conflicting dates on the?
No, sir. Not from the town.
From the town. Questions, comments, or a motion?
If this, if this route has been recommended by Public Safety, then I would like to make the motion that we approve May fifteenth for the road race sponsored by Women of Wilmington in the new route, as spelled out by this letter and by the Public Safety.
I'll second the motion.
Would, Mr. Chairman, would Mr. Shampoo consider incorporating the use of the town common in that motion?
Indeed, yeah, thank you.
Indeed.
And including the use of the town common.
Motion made, and seconded, all in favor? unanimous? Good luck.
Sunday, May fifteenth, just for clarification, it might have been a typo in my letter, it's a Sunday.
Oh, did I, oh.
Did I put Saturday?
I don't know, but I wrote, I think I read Sunday, or at least this says Sunday, so if I said Saturday, it should be Sunday. Did I say Saturday? I apologize. Trying to read too fast. It is, you were accurate as usual, Joe Marie, and it is Sunday, May fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Thank you very much, everybody.
The board has a letter, and this is interesting, because it gives us a couple of different preferences, from Kerry DeYoung and Jeremy Phillips, to use the gazebo in town common for a wedding ceremony in October of two thousand and eleven. And are they, I'm guessing that they're here. Congratulations. They sent a very nice letter, asking if they can use the town common. They're Wilmington residents, and they give us some dates. The first is Saturday, October eighth, second would be Saturday, October fifteenth, and the third preference would be Saturday, October first. I'm also not, as the letter says, I'm not aware of any conflict at this point on those dates, but we would want to make sure there is no, there is no conflict. So I don't know what action the board wants to, wants to take, and obviously would be...
Would you like us to pick your wedding date?
Would be subject.
Have a recommendation for the band.
I know some good DJs. I guess if there's no conflicting, scheduled conflicts right now, we could go with the first preference on Saturday, October eighth. That is your first preference?
Give me the opportunity to check it out, and then, so if the board wants to vote that, subject to its availability, and I believe it's available, but we just want to make sure that there's no, you know, SAT program or something, which I don't think there would be, but we want to make sure that there's no problem that would conflict with parking or anything.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think it'd be a problem to comment. In my wedding photo, right between my wife and I, there's a golfer. And I'm not kidding you. Yeah, so, you know, I think you'd be okay.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to grant the request for Saturday, October eighth, subject to confirmation of no conflict. I'll second the motion.
Motion made, and seconded, all in favor? unanimous? Good luck.
Thank you.
The board has a letter from Mass Perk regarding the new bottle bill, and asking if the board would support legislation relative to their resolution that they provided in support of the updating of the Massachusetts Bottle Bill. This has come before the board in the past. They've done due diligence on this and declined the last time to offer support, but this is a new bill. It's called an Act Updating the Bottle Bill. Sponsors are Representative Alice Wolf, Senator Cynthia, and Senator Cynthia Cream, and it's there for the board's review. They indicate that there are a number of communities that have indicated their support by a vote of their Board of Selectmen, and they've attached that list for you.
I might add, I'm reading it now again for the second time, third time, and I don't see a specific date that they want our response by. And this did come before us last year, and I was curious, is this the very same language of the last year's bill? I couldn't find the copy of the document that came before us last year, and before this meeting, I didn't get a moment to resurrect it from your office, Mr. Kira. Is the language on this different than the language from last year's? Because it feels like last year, when we reviewed this, there was some other meat on this bone that was potentially objectionable.
If it's not the same, I think it's very similar. I believe the board took its position last year after contacting members of the legislative delegation, and they had received a letter from then Chairman of Ways and Means, Charles Murphy, indicating that he thought this was going to be burdensome on small businesses. And I think that's where the board took its, took its position.
Yeah, and I don't want to speak, as I recall, there was some need for the small businesses to put in new procedures to be able to take in and offer claims or offer the rebates or the refunds on these things, and they didn't have the means of doing so today, so it was going to add additional cost to small businesses. So my first glance at this is, I'm in support of it, but I don't, I would ask you guys, if you'd be willing, maybe to let me do some research or whatever, and maybe we don't vote on this, or we take no action tonight. I want to take note, or make note to you, that the town of Bilrecque, the town of Burlington, town of North Reading, town of Reading, town of Tewksbury, have all voted in support of the updated bottle bill. So they see something here that you, that we collectively, as a group, last year didn't see. I feel like I'm missing something, so I want to take it upon myself to go and research, because on its face, this feels like a good idea, but maybe it's not. And so if we take no action tonight, I would like to reserve the opportunity, maybe to readdress this at a future Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't know if there's any opposition to that.
Do you want to reach out to the legislators again this year?
If there's any change of opinion by them, certainly, I'll do my own, I'd love, I'll certainly love to hear their opinion on it, and I can reach out myself to them, and I'll share any feedback I get. But I also want to sort of, I guess, I don't know, just make some inquiries through various other sources, other than just our legislators.
Certainly have no objection to that. I'd just have two comments. Number one is, with respect to our legislative delegation, I'm just always interested in hearing if there's something about the legislation that's not apparent when we get this kind of information. That's the kind of stuff I'd be interested in hearing from them. From my perspective, the reason why I was opposed to it last year was because of the effect that it would have on small business in a difficult economy. So those two angles, if you're going to do some homework, would be the angles I'd want to look at.
I gladly will, and again, I don't know if there's a procedure we need to follow here, but if it, if I guess, for my own purpose, if I think we ought to have a substantive discussion on this point again, I would like to maybe go through the chairman and see if we could get it on a future agenda, and we'll take it up again to see whether or not we want to vote after I've accomplished some information.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. It doesn't, they're not looking for an immediate response on this.
I didn't see any, so I think it's just...
Just table this until the next...
Sure. Thank you.
Is the board asking me to take any action at this point?
I may ask your help. If that's all right, I'll reach out to you tomorrow, we can talk to the folks that we need to talk to.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider closing and signing the warrant for the two thousand and eleven annual town meeting. The warrant would read as you have it in its draft form. It would be put in a formal warrant, and the board would need to specifically vote that it close and sign the warrant for the annual town meeting to be held on April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven.
Perhaps you can go over the articles one more time?
I move that we close and sign the warrant.
Motion made?
Second.
Second, all in favor? unanimous?
Sign above your name? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the town.
Thank you. Any public comments? Mr. S, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, I've been coming to these meetings for a while, and item number five, the communication from FiOS about a rate increase, that's refreshing, because usually it always says rate change, and I always wondered why you wrote rate change, because the change is never down, it's always up. So whoever typed that, you did a good job, say it was a rate increase, and make it very simple. At the last Selectmen's meeting, there was a comment about a change to a, to the condition to the permit of Whispering Pines.
Pines. And the question was asked at the Selectmen's meeting, and unfortunately, it was at a school committee meeting the same night as the Board of Appeals, so I did not hear the answer from the Town Attorney, whether they thought that this change would incur some liability to the town for the changes to the deeds of the people that bought under one condition and then they changed the conditions afterwards. Was there a determination of that?
Do you have that there?
It was highly unlikely. The opinion by the Town Council was that it was highly unlikely that the town could be held liable for damages as a result of the Board of Appeals' approval of a proposed modification.
Thank you.
Is that it? Any other public comments? New Business Committee reports.
I'd just like to say, I received a letter from the Town Clerk's Office certifying my nomination paper. Legally put me on the ballot, so the election's off and running. News agencies are here. I like to say, let's get it on. Let's get the debates going. I'm looking forward to it. And I'm all excited about running for reelection. Thank you.
Just as a quick poll, if I could, heads nodding or turning no, I thought kind of a unique invitation to negotiate about a prospective real estate acquisition tonight. Any interest in meeting for five minutes in executive session, give the manager some direction on that?
I have no objection to that.
All right. When it comes time for a motion, then I'd be happy to offer a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Okay. Any Business Committee reports?
Just one, I've been getting a lot of questions about, and I think I can give the answer, but the manager can, if I'm wrong, can address it, is, I guess, everybody's starting to see that the, all the town equipment's becoming the color white. And they're so used to being the orange that they're asking me now, why are we going, you know, the trucks are being painted white now. And I guess my, my guess to that, as I've been replying, is because of the, the sticker factor when we're buying them, I guess we're saving money now on the, you know, on the lot, as far as sending the trucks out and being painted. We're saving that much money per piece. And I believe that was the answer that I've been given. And if I'm wrong, I guess you can correct me.
Put answer, put answer, because we're not sending them out to paint. In fact, we're buying them that way. That large Vector truck, for example, I think we saved, believe it or not, about $3,700. In a, some of the smaller trucks, you're saving as much as $900. So, I made the decision to make, you know, to not spend extra money to paint a truck. And we selected that particular color. We made sure that the municipal signage is on the, is on all the trucks. But I'm glad you brought that up, because it's probably a question other people have, have asked. We're not trying to hide anything by not having blazing orange. We're trying to save, save dollars. That's the, that's the only reason why it's being done. I have no objection to orange personally.
My first cow was orange.
Can we save more if we buy purpose trucks?
Only if that's what the manufacturer is.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, briefly, I had the opportunity on, last Friday, the 11th, to attend the Legislative Breakfast Session at the Chelmsford Police Station. In attendance were our colleagues, Selectmen from various communities in our region, as well as a couple legislators. I won't go through the boring details. The two main issues of subject were the Chapter 90 funding that was being supported by MMA and as, that was being positioned by the Governor. And, and to that point, if the, what was being requested of the Governor by legislation, by our legislators, was that, that this be enacted and communicated back to the towns earlier than the rest of the stuff that they vote on, and so early that it be, I think, April 1st, to give the towns and cities time to, to decide how to use those resources. So, I think that's, I guess, hopefully, good news to Mr. Kira, as he plans ahead. But I will also say that the Governor's proposal was for three, I'm sorry, $200 million. And if that were to be passed, that a number that I have on this chart says that that would result in, I believe, $772,000 and change to Wilmington. I think you quoted $590. Am I mixing my numbers up?
No. The $590 is what we anticipate based upon, no, no change.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, that's, that's what we would expect if there was no increase.
Very well. All right. So, potentially, we, if, if things move, we'll see how, how the vote goes, but we might have a little bit more to do some, some help around town. That was one major issue. The other issue was, and I won't get into the details, but it was a discussion and a pretty substantive debate, mostly by your colleagues, who deal with it on a day-to-day basis, about the plan designed for health insurance, plans for municipal employees, and the, the desire of administrators to have the ability to negotiate those plans and change those plans outside of traditional collective bargaining, basically giving the cities and towns the same authority that the state has in determining and designing health, healthcare design. So, it's an ongoing discussion, and there's a lot of, I won't say debate, but a lot of motivation and momentum building on that subject and being put forth in front of the Governor. So, I believe that some action we can probably foresee coming out of that in probably 2011, 2012. But that was the, it was an interesting discussion, and it's always fun for me to be able to be in the, the company of our colleagues from different communities and sort of just get a sense of what they're going through and how their meetings go and what the subjects are that their towns are undergoing. So, I just thought I'd share that with you, you, my colleagues.
Did you tell them how great the job we're all doing here?
They all looked at us and said, "What the hell are you guys doing over there?" I said, "Hey, it's a secret."
Okay. Any more, new business? Important dates.
Tomorrow evening, March 15th, the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing Relative to the Warrant for the Annual Town Meeting will be held here at the Town Hall Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. Reminder, on Thursday, March 17th, the High School Building Committee will meet also here in Room 9 at 6:30 p.m. And at that same date, the Friends of the Library Supporter Appreciation Night will be held at the library at 7:00 p.m. The Wilmington Company of Minutemen are holding their installation of offices on March 20th at Minutemen Headquarters. On that day, March 20th, at 2:00 p.m. down by the Harnden Tavern, the Board of Selectmen has been invited to attend. On April, April 1st is the last day to register to vote in the Town Election and Town Meeting. Obviously, if you're already registered, it doesn't pertain to you. But if you're not registered and you're interested in registering for the Town Election and Town Meeting, the Town Clerk's Office will be open until 8:00 p.m. on April 1st, and passport services will also be available. Would also mention on that night, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., the Wilmington Educational Foundation will be holding their annual vendor fair night at the Knights of Columbus Hall. And for you dog and cat owners, on April 2nd, the Town, through its Board of Health, will conduct the rabies clinic at the Public Buildings Department, which is located on 30 Church Street, from noon to 2:00 p.m. The cost is $10 per animal, please cats on a carrier and dogs on a leash. That's it?
Motion?
I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing prospective purchase of real property, not to return to open session.
Second. Motion made in second. Voice count?
Yes.
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 Unanimous?
Thank you.